Pledge allegiance by the United States Republic, which is fair, one patient, God.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and recess our, uh, our council meeting to go into the public hearing on the 2025 published budget. Laura will read the budget.
Okay, for 2025, the proposed budget is Casino Riverboat, a hundred thousand. County General, ten million, one hundred thirty-three thousand, one hundred and one dollars. Reassessment, one hundred and thirty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Police pension, fifteen thousand. Courthouse lease rental, one million, one hundred and thirty-two thousand. Highway, four million, six hundred eighty-five thousand, one hundred and fifteen. Local road and street, two hundred and sixty thousand. Cumulative bridge, three hundred and eighty-five thousand. Health, one hundred ninety-nine thousand, six hundred and forty. Cumulative building, ninety-six thousand. Jail lease rental, three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and forty-four. Aviation airport, two hundred and thirty-one thousand, three hundred and forty. Cumulative capital development, three hundred and seven thousand. Economic development income tax, seated, one million, eight hundred twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five. County user fee, twenty-eight thousand, three hundred. Local health department trust account, five thousand. Supplemental juvenile probation services, fifteen thousand. Supplemental adult probation services, sixty-six thousand, three hundred. Plat book fees, eight thousand. Local health maintenance, seven thousand. Drug-free community, thirty thousand. Free trial program grant, eighty-two thousand, seven eighty-eight. Community foundation grant, forty-five thousand, six hundred fifty-eight. Veterans court grant, one hundred thirty-four thousand, five hundred. Court interpreter, two thousand, five hundred. County elected officials training, five thousand. D R M O, five thousand. Community crossings highway, one million, five hundred thousand. Statewide nine-one-one, two hundred and seventy-one thousand, four hundred twenty-one. Accident report, eight thousand. Sim opioid grant, sixty thousand. Firearms train, fifteen thousand. Clerks perpetuation fund, five thousand. Aviation grant, five hundred and seventy thousand. Airport improvements, fifteen thousand. Misdemeanor, one hundred thirty thousand. Lit P S A P, seven hundred thirty-nine thousand, one hundred twenty-one. Opioid restricted, one hundred and thirty-five thousand. Opioid unrestricted, forty-one thousand. Voca grant, eighty-six thousand, one hundred eighty. B T health grant, six thousand, one hundred thirty. Drug court grant, one hundred forty-two thousand, eight hundred. Identification security protection, one thousand, seven hundred. Local emergency planning commission, ten thousand. Health, S B four, three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, one hundred fifty-seven. Lowet Public Safety County share, one million, five hundred seventy-five thousand, twenty-two. Cares local health department, forty-two thousand, five hundred. And the American Rescue Plan, one million, five hundred thousand. The total budget for the 2025 year is proposed at twenty-seven million, four hundred sixty-one thousand, four hundred and sixty-two dollars.
Thank you. All right, we'll entertain public comment.
So that includes all grants as well, correct?
Yes.
All grants, all the grants. Mary, I think you had a couple of grants that weren't included in there, correct?
I, yes, I sent those to, um, in your job for sure. I'm not sure I sent them to you. So I didn't get them published. So we'll have to work on next year's money coming out of it.
Do you know then, Laura, what percentage of that twenty-seven million is grants or not? I'm just curious.
Not offhand, but I would say probably five million.
Five million is grants, okay.
Close to it.
Yes.
What is the projected revenue or income coming into the county?
Projected revenue for the entire county, I'm not sure. For county general, the projected revenue is eight million, nine hundred thousand.
Thank you, Laura.
If you want, if you really want that number, call my office, I like to tell you, but I can't tell you tonight.
Certainly, thank you.
Any other comments from the public?
May I just ask a question from the outset? Forgive me if this has already been established and I'm just not yet aware. How is the budgeting process conducted? Like, is this a zero-based budgeting or is it based on previous budgets out of the mid to certain top areas?
So, we take, I mean, we take the estimated revenue that's coming in. We look at the last five years. We go back, I don't know if I'm answering your question, but we go back the last five years. We look at what has been, uh, spent over the last five years. You know, departments put together their budgets. They get the same thing. They get what was budgeted in each department over the last five years. And then they look at whatever increases they feel they need in places that, uh, require an increase. They examine the whole budget, not only by departments, but by line item, by, uh, by a total.
Any other comments? Anything the board wants to add to the public hearing?
Just one question about the budget that's now, are we waiting?
Usually we wait to, if this is to go over the published budget at this point, to give the public the opportunity to ask questions. Yes, I'm sorry, then I'll get back to you, Billy.
Could, could you repeat the number for the economic development department? Was that one point eight million? Eight million? Just wondering, eight million, some thousand.
Yeah, one million, eight hundred and twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five. Uh, yes.
Yeah, so if the department does not use all of the money that was requested or given for that year, is that money set in that budget? Or is, is that money subtracted from the future? Or, or did they always choose to leave it?
No, not every department uses everything that they have. That money gets rolled over and to the next year.
So if it's rolled over to the next year, is it deducted from that new total that they asked? Or do they just leave that nesting there and start fresh?
I'll look, I'll look for this.
It's usually left there, um, but the, what, the Department of Local Government Finance occupies the budget. Once, once council is done reviewing and submitted to council to the, to the Department of Local Government Finance, they come back and say, well, you've got enough money or not. So let's take County General for instance. It's a ten million dollar budget. The estimated revenue is sitting at eight point nine. So the budget is higher than the estimated revenue. So they go back and they'll go, well, we rolled over for previous years. And so if there's enough money there, they will approve that budget. Where that goes to, goes back to the general fund, right? It doesn't sit in, for example, Circuit Court's budget, it goes back to the general fund. Well, Circuit Court's budget is out of County General. So yes, if you don't use your money, it goes back to the County General's fund. Right, so if I expend every dime of my budget, it goes back to the County General? And you start from zero, with zero budget. However, Nathan's money is a different fund. So if he doesn't use the one point eight million that he's got in his budget, then it rolls back over into the eleventh fund.
Can I point a clarification? That one point eight million, only about one-third of that is budgeted to my office. The other two-thirds are, I think, mostly I T and the county's liability insurance out of the commissioner's budget. So my actual office budget is, as currently published, is about five hundred and ninety-three out of the one point eight million.
Other questions? Sure.
Laura, in the last eight years, when we go back and look at the previous year, are we over, are we under?
You've mostly been over, your budget has been over the estimated revenue.
But I mean, at the end of the fiscal year, do we have a positive return or do we have a negative return?
Well, the last five years, you've pretty much had a positive. You have money rolled over. That's why there's been an increase. And because the departments have not spent everything that have been allocated.
And when we have an increase, it's usually how much roughly?
Does Mary have a roll over? I'm not sure if that's the way you're asking that.
Yeah, when we have a roll over.
When you, when you roll over, well, one year you've rolled over probably seven hundred thousand. But I've seen in a couple of years where it was a million pounds. So it just depends.
I mean, another fair point that we want to make also is, uh, there's sometimes money that is budgeted. So, uh, and, and that's why one year it may be higher than another year. You know, let's take, for example, we're doing a project and, you know, we put money into a, a place or allocate budget money to do an expenditure, but then that does not happen, falls through. So then once again, that money rolls back over and it goes into the general fund or into a special fund, like in the case of, uh, Exmalts Health. Yes.
So the question about the H R position that's possibly going to be, it's two hundred and twelve thousand for this position. If it gets decided to put in, does this, let's say in two years, we decide it's not working. It's not working, it was a bad idea. How do you get out of that? Or is it a position that is now a permanent position that will be discounted?
Uh, same, same as I T. We did that before. We had in-house I T. We established a I T department. Then whenever we, uh, decided that, uh, I T was not working, the way it was set up in the county at that time, they, uh, did not replace the person. Then that money got, in this case, it got reallocated because we contract I T out now. But in the case of something was completely did away with, that budget would be dissolved and not be funded. Potentially extra revenue that would be used elsewhere or not used whichever the council needs.
Any other questions? All right, if there's no further questions on the 2025 budget, we will close our public hearing and we will reconvene our normally scheduled Plustec County Council meeting. Thank you. All right, we've closed the public hearing and we will, uh, move on to the sheriff, the nine-one-one assistant discussion.
Last meeting, I approached the council about adding an assistant nine-one-one director. Um, and I was asked to provide some duties and responsibilities for the position. I think I left everyone a copy of that. I don't know if everyone's had a chance to look that over. It shows a lot of duties and responsibilities. Um, shows how important that position is, excuse me. And it's never so important as the last couple of months when I've had a changeover in that position and I had nobody to turn to when that position was vacated. Um, and I want to clarify, let's say we have ten dispatchers. I'm not wanting to add an eleventh dispatcher. What I want to do is hire from within those ranks. Um, we're wanting to promote somebody who's already there. I'm going to make them an assistant nine-one coordinator. Um, I think last month I just said a few of the responsibilities off the top of my head. This can show you, there's three pages of responsibilities. And this will be added to their normal responsibilities. So, I mean, it'll be up to the council to decide what kind of compensation they would like to give this person. So if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them for you. Normally the, it cut you off, Ken, I'm sorry. Um, normally it's between three and eight percent in, in the matrix is what they're at. Now, I wouldn't suggest a three percent because as you see, there's a lot of responsibilities that go along with this. And it's high as, as eight percent. So like I said, I'll leave that up to the council to decide what they want to do. And it's going to depend on how many years of service. We, we don't have, we're going to open it up to everybody in there except for, of course, the nine-one-one director, whoever wants to put in for it and will interview for that position. So it's going to depend on how many years of service that person has as far as what they'll be compensated, plus the additional percentage of a raise, so.
The, uh, in your, uh, in your development of your, of your leadership in the sheriff's department through nine-one-one, jailers and the sheriff's department, this is the only position, from what I understood, that does not have an assistant or somebody to back them up at this point.
Yes, till two months ago, when I, like I said before, I didn't realize that. When I'd lost that position, when that person left, I had no one to turn to. This is a person that can step right in there and can take over that position. Hopefully can take over the nine-one-one director and, of course, you know, move right down the line. So yeah, this is the only position within our department. There's no assistant. We have a jail commander, I have a chief deputy, I have sergeants. Um, and they can, of course, take over when I'm not available and they do. Um, but now we have no one to turn to in that position. That, that would create this position and that would be their responsibility. So you can see it's very involved.
Yeah, yeah, it's, I, I believe it's.
I don't know how I've overlooked this, but I have, you know, until now. So I, I think it's an essential, essential position. The commissioners wanted to explain that to them last week. They approved it, so. Only thing they had a concern about was they thought I was adding a position, which, which I'm not. Let's say those ten dispatchers I said before, we're wanting to pull within those ranks, so.
Maybe rekindling somebody, but we're not, like I say, once again, it's not adding a new employee into the ranks. It's just.
No, we're not.
Expanding the responsibilities of an existing employee to their cover.
We're adding a lot of responsibility to that person, yes, yes. Any questions over the duties and responsibilities? Any questions about the position? That's what I'm here for. Well, it depends on who gets it. I mean, that would be ideal. We have two in training right now. We still have one open position, so we're trying to move those new people around. So I don't want to say that person is only going to be nights or only going to be days. The nine-one-one coordinator, she's been working all shifts. Um, I'd let, leave it up to them, whatever they want it to work. Is that correct, Fred? Yes. I don't want to say they're only going to be working nights, Brad. I don't want to say that, but I, I think I'll leave it up to them, however they want to work. And Angie's been pretty good. She's been working some nights and weekends. I think they'll sort of alleviate her doing a lot of that, so.
Do you, uh, you know by chance what, that may be hard to say because of sergeant classifications, but what other, what percentage of difference a assistant gets versus?
In the average, it'd be five to six percent. You know, some of them's as high as eight. Do you know right offhand, Fred, what, what the highest would be? Yes. You know, the, the assistant jail commander, I think he's probably seven or eight percent. Um, some of the sergeants, like Fred's a sergeant, he, he, I, I'm not sure. I don't want to say what he's at, but I mean, some of them may be four or five percent. I, I, I think three percent would be on the low side for, for the responsibilities this person would have. But of course, it's up to the council, whatever compensation they would like to give them. Because there, there's a lot of responsibility that goes there. And as Brad said, it, it probably going to be a lot of nights, mostly nights. Well, that'll be next month to see where we're at. Cause we're running on overtime because we've had three radio positions open. We have a deputy position because one went in the military. Um, and so we're getting a lot of comp time and everything, but I'll, I'll approach you about all that next month. Yes, there's been some positions open, so all the dispatchers happen to fill in. Paying them time and half, the deputies paying them time and a half. The jailers, there's been some open positions too, just, that's the nature of the beast. We've had to, we've had to fill some in, so I, I, we're not sure what those numbers are yet, so.
I'll say maybe something, uh, is, I guess, you know, ma- maybe you can explain to the council as to why, um, why you're requesting this now due to the fact of people leaving and all, so they understand why, 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 why it's being requested now and not like into the next budget.
I, I need the position. I mean, if that person leaves now, I, I, I'm kind of lost. I mean, if, say the, the new nine-one-one coordinator, is that what you're talking about? If she would leave in a month? I'm not saying she's going to, but if she would, I have no place to turn, which I didn't two months ago. They were asking Fred and I if they could take a day off. You know, they were calling us at midnight on Saturdays and Sundays. And if we had an assistant in there, they could go through it, they would know the schedule, they would know all this stuff. That's going to be their responsibility, not ours. And that's what they do with the assistant jail commander. That's what they do with, um, you know, the sergeants. That's what you do with, with, uh, the chief deputies. That, that's the questions they pose to them, so. You know, I, I think it's important we do it sooner than later. I really would rather not wait till the end of the year because that's still four months away.
No, I, I appreciate, I know we've had conversations. I, I understand the dilemma that you were put in here not too long ago. So looking for a solution, not be in that situation again, or nine-one-one in this county.
When everyone calls, where do they call? They call the jail and that's who picks up the phone, is those dispatchers.
Right, exactly. It's, 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 it's where all emergency management starts and that all.
You lose your electricity, where do you call?
Right.
A dispatcher. You ever get in an accident, where do you call? You know, that's where they call Ask Jeff, they call into dispatch. We're, we're tens of thousands of calls every year. That's where they call, I gotta have somebody in there. So that, that's an essential position. All of them are essential positions, but if I don't have a dispatcher in there, they can't answer the phone to call these guys.
All right, any other questions for the sheriff? Entertain a motion to approve or disapprove the sheriff's request?
I'll make a motion to approve it at five percent. I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the, uh, assistant nine-one-one, uh, director to get a five percent increase, leaving that selection up to the personnel of the sheriff's department.
So the five percent is what you're making currently plus the five percent increase in wages, plus the another five percent to make your wages, is that what you're saying?
What, if I can clarify that, what it'll be was whoever goes into that position, is they could have two years, they could have eighteen years. So whatever position they would have, I don't know what you guys would approve as far as pay raises go. Yeah, you're exactly right. Is it going to be including that five percent pay raise for next year? But it's going to depend on where they're at in the matrix. And it'll be five percent over that. Am I making sense?
Right, yes. Since, since it's being requested in the, you know, for 2024.
Yeah.
It would be, if I understand, it's a five percent increase in their wage as it is today.
Yes.
So if they're making, you know, thirty dollars an hour, it'll be five percent, thirty plus five percent.
Is that five percent or five percentage points within your matrix?
And that's, you, I think I provided that, yeah.
Okay.
So, so whoever gets this is going to get what they're making currently in the matrix, plus five percent.
I just hate to say which person it would be because.
Right, exactly. You don't.
I don't know.
Know who that qualified, uh, person will be.
They do a board and then they present it to me and then, you know, how that goes, selection process, so.
So could we run that on the total, or it could be five percent? Or it could be a higher employee on a daily?
That's correct.
That's why I was saying that the final, the final number will come next month, depending upon who the candidate is.
And we can put that in the formula.
Candidate would be.
Okay, in this, in this position takes place, is there a time? Or whenever Chris comes and says that one person is to do this?
We're going to be interviewing for it right away. Um, I would, by the next month, October, we would have it placed. Yes. Yeah, because the nine-one-one coordinator asked me weekly if, so I'm sure she's going to, and the board, I'm sure Fred will be on it, they'll, they'll be interviewing pretty quick.
All right, so we have a, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
All right.
Opposed?
Thank you, it makes a big difference, I thank you. You're welcome.
Mr. Auger?
Good evening, everybody. Uh, I wanted to go ahead and just give you all an update on the courthouse project, starting very briefly with finances. Per the First National Bank, uh, statement at the end of August, accounting for the interest regenerated in that month and accounting for two pending payments, our contingency has a current actual balance of four hundred and eight thousand, seven hundred and nine dollars and seventy-six cents and an on-paper balance of four hundred and ninety-one thousand, four hundred and sixty-three point seventy-six. And what I mean that by an on-paper balance is that, um, we have a substantial amount of money from that bond that is invested in generating interest. The interest I'm accounting for here is just on the funds in the First National Bank tranche at the moment. Uh, but there is a cap as to how much of that interest can actually be allocated toward the project and anything over that cap either can go toward the first payment the county makes or can be used in another county facility or both, depending on the pleasure of the council at the time and how much extra interest there is. But for instance, for instance, if we wanted to renovate the West Annex, we could loo- use leftover interest funds there on that. So we have another eighty-two thousand, give or take, in interest we can generate that will be applicable to this project budget. Um, project progress, uh, the final concrete pour for the slab was finished on Friday morning and the new north vestibule pour happened today. We won't know, uh, until the test results are returned from Alton Witzig, our third-party construction testing vendor. Uh, but they look good. We haven't had any issues with, uh, traffic over them yet. And our superintendent mentioned to me today that the mix is actually heavier than is standard for this sort of application. The bat removal technician finishes work on Friday, but intends to return to check in on the situation once we've completed more of the work in the attic. The guano removal team is mostly done and will help to fini- will be able to finish now that Trapper Mike has wrapped up his work.
Did I say, did I read you guano?
Guano.
All right.
The.
Say that's a typo.
The sheet metal team has begun installation of ductwork for the HVAC sub. Electrical, plumbing and masonry subcontractors are continuing their respective tasks with the masons continuing to work their way around the building, grinding out the old grout as well as installing lintels in the building. Delta Three was on site this morning taking markings to prepare for site drainage work and the water proof, waterproofing materials are expected to arrive tomorrow. I reported to the commissioners last Monday that most of the flat roof areas had been less problematic than we had feared based on the first section they tackled. Unfortunately, that changed on Friday when they discovered excessively rotted decking in one section and determined that. when they discovered excessively rotted decking in one section and determined that someone at some point who previously did repair work in this particular area put the flashing in backwards. We have not had any real oopses on the project, but we continue to discover past oopses. Any questions on the progress of the project? I've got a little bit of additional information regarding the additional request. I can provide that now or wait till you get down to additionals, but I did go over, so you guys understood what costs my office might be needing to address with that money.
Yeah, you can go ahead.
Okay, so the professional services line item has a current balance of $739.01, which will not get me very far. I have one final payment to make to the consultants for the regional entrepreneurship project being funded largely through ready funds from the Indiana Economic Development Corporation. This is a reimbursable grant program, so I have to expend the funds and then receive reimbursement both from the Northwest Indiana Forum and from the other participating counties. Reimbursements go back into Fund 112, but not back into my budget, so that needs to be replenished directly by the council and just doesn't happen when they pay us. There will be one or two last invoices for the ongoing rebuild of the county's website. I expect at least one or two more bills from Barnes and Thordenburg regarding the litigation pertaining to changes to the county's Unified Development Ordinance, and so all of those are guaranteed to come through. As I reported to the commissioners recently, there's a possibility that we may be seeing some traction soon on the potential housing project proposed for part of the county farm. If this does move forward this year, while we do have some private sector support for the pre-development costs, some of those may have to be covered by my budget, either until those private sector partners reimburse us, or any costs that they don't cover. The county and/or the other financial backers would be reimbursed if and when the project moves into site development and construction, so long-term, as long as we make it happen, it wouldn't be a liability for the county, but short-term, we may need to address that. I'm not necessarily sure that anything's going to happen in the last couple of months of the year, but those first three instances are all going to come in between now and December. Thank you.
Any questions for Nathan?
Still want to say thanks for putting the pictures on the internet.
All right, George Walker?
I'm going to try and tell you what it is that I think you need to hear, and I'm going to try very hard not to get mad. I'm going to pass. They're pictures of the most recent roof leaks in the new portion of Circuit Court's file room and jury room. We are currently with courthouse, dealing with what I like to call significant deferred maintenance, to the tune of millions of dollars. I'm concerned that once again, we are putting off repairs and hoping Band-Aids will fix larger issues. This is not the first leak that we've had in the new roof, and I'm a little upset that my rational requests get ignored until I start sending emails to the head of, the president of our mission and council. You should all know that the plan currently is to wait and see if it rains and leaks again, which is what has caused this issue. The jury room already smells musty. It's the second leak we've had in the jury room. I have been told that no insulation needs to be removed because of the type of insulation that's in there, and I do not believe that that is correct. In addition to the leaks, we have dealt with 60% or more humidity in our offices for two years. We have been told that everything is mold-proof, and we don't need to worry about condensation or humidity in the offices. Only recently have I been told that there is, that they've agreed that a dehumidifier needs to be added to the HVAC system, which is what I requested two years ago. When the first file room leak appeared, which is the second leak we've had in the new, on the new room, I was told it must be condensation from the HVAC problem, which for two years I've been told is not a problem. It wasn't until we involved Mr. Orger that we got anything on the humidity other than, you just don't understand. Our humidity in the offices was higher than it was outside, and we were being told it's because we have to have 10% outside air. Mathematically, it makes no sense. It's my request to you as the financial governing body to protect this asset. No one's contacted the court about any repairs to be done, the damage that you see in those pictures, or that anything's going to be done other than we're going to wait and see. They went on the roof, they tried to find the leaks, they think they fixed the leaks, they ran a hose up there, and we still have leaks, but they think that's just residual water. I like to think I'm a fairly intelligent person. I have a home, and I do timely repairs on my house to protect my assets. I do timely repairs on my vehicles to protect my assets. It's disheartening when I'm told by maintenance and contractors who have guaranteed their work that I just don't understand, when the explanation doesn't make any rational sense. For two years, I was told I don't understand about the humidity and why it is the way it is until they want to blame the roof leak on that. I've also been waiting for a month now for the fourth switch for our skylight lights to be repaired. I can turn it on and off, no dimming, can't do it from any place other than at the bench, and they're still working on that. The damage from the leaks is now more severe. It involves frywall and ceiling tiles at a minimum that need to be replaced. We have to do something different than what's been done at the courthouse, or we're going to wind up in exactly the same place. I need to know who it is that's responsible, make sure that these get repaired, and that somebody's being held accountable to get the repairs done. I thought that you ought to know what's going on, and I'm sorry that it sounds like I'm complaining. The new courthouse, I love having security, I really do, and I appreciate that, and I'm sure Judge Coker and everybody in that building will tell you we appreciate it. But I am concerned that we are going to wind up with this building where we are with... Answer any questions for anyone.
So, from my understanding, after the emails went out this week and all, they did end up with somebody over there that looked from the contractor side of it, not just from our maintenance department, from the contractor side, to look over the problem and come up with a fix, which I believe they did do a fix, and then look for, you know, for a future resolution?
That is my understanding currently. Going to wait and see what happens when it rains. Something happened, contact our maintenance department? First time it happened, I contacted our maintenance department, and Mr. Allen came over, and the first leak we had was in the jury room in a different place than the photographs that you said. And they came over and decided it was a scupper drain problem. I don't know what a scupper drain is, it's a drain on the roof. And so they fixed that, and I left the ceiling tile out for a while to see whether or not it was actually fixed. Put a tote under the leak, because that's what we need now, to catch any water that might fall. Then we had, when we came in on, I think it was Tuesday, and had both of these leaks, I called maintenance twice and got no answers. So, I called security and asked them if they'd seen maintenance. I told them we had an emergency because at that time we thought it was just in file room. And they sent one of the ladies up with Bob, let us in file room, which is not what we were asking. Eventually, both Larry came up and John Allen came over, and they tried to tell me that they didn't have a roof that was going to be available that day. And I essentially was not polite and told them that wasn't acceptable. And they did find someone, I don't know who, come up and look on the roof and see if they could. Yes, at one point in time, Mr. Orger was fielding all of my texts out, and certainly he is currently going to field yet again my questions about the switch that I have not had.
That switches went out four times in two years?
Three times in two years.
Well, at one point, they did, somebody finally determined that that was the issue, and apparently, yet again, it went bad everywhere.
It's good that it's low voltage, so it's probably not going to start fire. Oh, don't laugh, I can't take a fire.
And I've been in Mary's office.
It's insane. And the last contractor person that they had come up tried to pat me on my head and tell me I didn't know anything, and I had been sending Mr. Orger pictures every morning.
These warranty contractors, or these just guys?
I have no idea because I'm not privy to that.
It has all been people associated with either our design team, their engineers, or Ton and Blank who have responded. Now, because I didn't know any of this with the humidity was going on until this year, I don't know if by the time the engineer came up, that's still under warranty. I haven't seen any billing for it. They have been very good about trying to support the system they designed. The last I spoke to the engineer, he did, you know, he came on site, he could not find anything that he thought was the source of the humidity issue. And I do know from talking to Judge Coker's staff and probation staff that humidity is an issue on that entire upper level, but it doesn't seem to be as bad there as in the judge's offices. And what, yes, well, and what I was going to say is, what's a little bit difficult for me to make sense of is that her offices are mostly in the original building, while the courtroom and a couple of the other spaces are a part of the addition, so it's not even clear to me, obviously a layman, like what the core issue is, but when the engineer couldn't come, came up and couldn't figure out, he said he was going to take it back to his team. I haven't heard anything further on that, and he may just end up recommending what, exactly what J and K said, that we need to install a central dehumidifier, but I don't know for sure. So, talking to Bill again is on my list of to-dos the judge has given me. Is it, okay, so it's the whole building?
The only reason they believe me is I bought little temperature and humidity things. We run a dehumidifier all the time, we killed a $400 one, they refunded us.
I guess my question is, is this a, and I mean, ultimately, and I appreciate you bringing this to us because, you know, we are a fiscal body, and we want to make sure money is spent correctly. Ultimately, you know, we can, as counsel folks, put pressure on others to try and resolve it. You know, I always hate to say this, but it falls under the commissioner's privy to their buildings, you know, they're the ones that have to take the lead on this, and I hope that after some of the conversations this week, that one or all or some will be a little more involved to try and follow this through. You know, I hate to see Nathan, he's right now working on a courthouse, you know, to be pulled back and forth onto that.
But I don't have anybody else I can call.
And I understand, I understand, I appreciate, I just said, you know, he has enough things on his plate that, you know, I would be, if it was me, I would suggest sending the commissioners, every one of them pictures every time you do, if you don't.
I sent them both to you and to Mrs. Mellon. I have asked to be on their next agenda as well, so I don't know if I can do it at 8:30 in the morning, but I can.
Yeah.
But you need to know, because you're dealing with some of the same people on the courthouse, and I don't know who to call now. I mean, Mr. Orger's been kind enough to assist us when he can, and I don't want to downplay that at all because he tends to get more than other people I call right now, so.
I guess my question is, is this something that, just when they say it's in the sheriff's office as well, so this just started after the renovation of the building, or has this been a problem when you were sheriff as well?
We, I think we had leaks.
I think he's talking, leaks or humidity?
Well, the humidity, you know, the high humidity.
We would have days that it was...
Empty one three times a day.
Yeah, that's kind of my question, because this may have been a problem for a long time, and now it's just got exacerbated because we've made the building banger, we've changed. Yeah, that's part of the old building. I maybe we...
I'm here.
Yeah. But I just have concerns, like I said, I know since I've been on the council, we've been dealing with roof leaks over there in that building, and had the roof replaced, then, you know, had a problem with that, you know, so that, you know, roof, I think, is, you know...
And you've got multiple levels emptying onto a flat roof, which is that leak this last time.
I did talk to John Allen before I talked to you on Friday night, and obviously, he's not certain, and we won't know until we're sure if Eric's work did the trick until we do get another, but he thought, yes, judge pointed, what judge pointed out, there are a lot of roofs dumping onto that and putting a lot more pressure on that section of roof than elsewhere in the building, but he did think that this issue, the actual leak itself, might have been part of the Firestone issue they've had nationwide that Ton and Blank repaired, that they didn't, they missed or whatever. If it's fixed now, that's probably the case. If there's something else, we're going to have to dig into it, but he did think that that might have been the overarching issue, was that when Ton and Blank came back and implemented the Firestone repairs, they missed something or messed something up, and Eric had to come back and fix it.
Appreciate it.
All right. Thanks, Judge.
All right, we'll move on to transfers, additionals that need advertised, and additionals. We have the prosecutor, $500 for training to acquisition of evidence. Highway, $20,000, Bytumus to Hot Mix. The sheriff has $15,000. Nope, nope, that's right. The additionals that we need to advertise, or that have been advertised, excuse me, are the CDC, $100,000 to professional services, Circuit Court, $10,000 jurors, and Superior Court, $10,000 jurors. Right, yes, that's moving from one to the other, so it's not actually two, just a move from point A to point B. All right, I'll entertain a motion for all, any part of... All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Okay, approve and sign the 8:12 regular meeting minutes, the 8:12 budget hearings, or the 8:12 and 8:13 budget hearings, and the 8:26
or the 8/12 and 8/13 budget hearings, and the 8/26 special session. Everybody seen them, they got emailed out?
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Jeff motions and. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we're down to budget discussions. So, uh, at our last meeting, our special session, we had some discussion about the budgets, uh, the, you know, question of what the annual budget, you know, or the proposed revenue was, what the budget is, the differences, and, uh, everybody was kind of challenged with some, come up with some ideas, some conversations for, uh, things that have been proposed, or things that they would like to request. So I will open it up to the floor to start the discussion, or the board here to start the discussion.
I kind of start with, uh, you may think in our discussion, talking about I know that Brad or Mike or somebody said so I would move that, that we do that. I think she also had a not so sure that I've seen, checking I've done. So, those two things. I don't know, don't know how firm you guys are on your fix that. I don't have. That makes sense.
I fixed mine for $450, whoever's charged.
If you give $450, that, I don't care either way.
They just change the door. I mean, I bet I don't know what's wrong, I never say that's what mine.
$4.5. I, I would assume the assistant's new position, correct?
Just didn't have somebody in the spot.
So then, just take it down to the 8,000. I, I'd assume whatever it takes to repair a transmission. 3,000, 4,000? Leave 6,000. Did you get that then, Laura? I'm done.
I asked Kevin to come to talk about human resource. I'm gonna let him talk, so he can get out of here.
I'm not here to champion anything. I told Sheila I would come and talk about what my office has done as it bears on your decision making. Or not, you add, add as department, department head. In your role and having to allocate funds to best serve the taxpayers, not take what I say, kind of guide other than how's it going on or how we. My office has kind of taken on the role of the fact of human resources department because we don't have one. Uh, some of that is poured by Laura's office, but a lot of the bigger issues come to my office. Uh, some of the policies in our policy book direct employees to my office, lack any other place to direct them. Confidential source, they were complaining about an department head, for example. Could have some sort of resolution that way, and that's been utilized many times over the last 12 years that I've been doing this job. So, I guess the best way to explain it is that the way we serve the county in that role been largely reactive and not proactive. I would envision a HR department would be much better able to be proactive in a lot of issues, we'll get into here. But what we've done is, you know, we put fires out, basically. Problem, we react to it. And that's one big part of it. The other thing we do is, and you might be, view this as a little bit proactive, is we help the department heads or, and employees interpret the county employee handbook, which is supposed to serve as a guide for how to resolve certain problems, how their benefits work, or how overtime works, uh, how the hiring and firing process is supposed to work, how military leave works, FLSA, all of these types of things have a bearing on all of the employees, try to get guidance on that disciplinary issues, unfortunately, how to write somebody up properly, how to maintain an employee file. And we give this, the best guidance we can on that. That's the only thing really proactive we do. Uh, but a lot of times that's also reactive because they're calling us after the problem's already happened. Or they're, they're ready to fire. What we don't do is offer any kind of employee training. Not off, I mean, I'm not going to do that, don't look to me to do that. There's, uh, you know, you're not, there's no training, a lot of departments offer training, of course, uh, but it's almost always specifically on how to do the job at hand, sheriff's department, how to be a better ODEP, or highway department, how to operate their trucks properly, those types of things. What they don't get is training generally on how to work as a group, how to, how to, uh, maintain their proper mental health and work environment, how to be a self-starter, team building, and generally how to maintain a healthy workplace, something that a, a good human resources department should be able to do, offer training on that, offer guidance on that. In addition to offering guidance on things that our county benefit package, how is our current, uh, health insurance going to apply to those employees, families, is cost worth it, retirement plan, IRF, how's that interact with their others? Not that they would be a financial advisor overall, but they could certainly give guidance on how that plan would work, their retirement age might be, those types of things that a human resources department would have to do at a private employer. Picture bond corporation or something, they're giving guidance to those. Of course, doing it for the county is infinitely harder, uh, because imagine you have department heads who don't have to listen to you, they're elected. It's largely a collective effort, including the elected department heads, the, to work together. But you're obviously gonna have situations where you're gonna have some budding of heads between the council. Uh, it also would offer, I think, a place for people to go, other than my office, which I would appreciate because it's kind of, there isn't any, think of a place where employees can go, or department has to go, where they would just have, just to have general questions that aren't necessarily legal questions. They, they end up coming in my front door, which is okay. But they might want somebody that's doing that full-time. Whether it justifies a full-time position, I couldn't tell you. It's hot and cold. Paramount, for seems like a period of time, and then it pulls off, and there, there isn't. Whether or not that role could be, uh, some sort of duplicative role where there are another level of administration, what you're really talking about here is an administrative role, which I think a lot of people money, uh, in some bigger organizations, well, another administrator who tend to be, tend to get well-paid, uh, but don't actually manage anything directly. Well, uh, maybe they could offer some other roles, as board, secretary of administrator for the board, gathering information, help the board make decisions. How's each department doing on the budget? Where are the pros and cons of, of what's being accomplished in that department? What, maybe a comprehensive analysis of what every employee in the county does, what role is, what the job obligations are. Judge Welker explained here today, she, they have anybody to turn to. Don't really have an office. So, she's sorted to Nathan, who takes on a lot of that role. That's really not his role. So, whether or not, you know, you guys have to allocate resources for this county, and I know it's a tough job. But really are, you have almost no administrative level. And that might be common for small counties, I don't really. I just, a lot of times I use the analysis of tantamount to running a school with all of the teachers coming directly to the board, no administrators. No principals, there's nobody to give any kind of guidance to the board. Overall, job is to look at the whole picture, whole county, all 150-plus employees, all the departments, how's it working together, instead of hearing from each individual department about, you know, because highway department's gotta put asphalt, sheriff's department's gotta maintain justice, they all have their role. Nobody's real, other than you guys collectively. And it's, it's easier, you know, it's, it's, it's easier for them to go to one person. Like I said, I'm not advocating for anything. I told Sheila, these are my thoughts, I told her this on the phone, I told Ken on the phone, I didn't get to talk to the rest of you. She asked me to come tonight. So if you have specific questions about how we handle things, I'd be happy to do that. Well, for one example, you know, I spent Friday, or Thursday, Sheriff and I were, it ended up being a couple of hours, on, two hours on the phone with administrative law judge, handling a, a unemployment plan. And you think, well, I mean, how could that be cost-effective? Well, we can't just ignore unemployment claims, because when I took the job, we had, we had like 15 people on unemployment in the county, which was ridiculous, because you shouldn't get unemployment unless you're laid off or terminated without cause. We don't lay off anybody almost ever, and we don't terminate people typically without cause. Yep, good, by the way, of following the policy, a lot of departments have gotten really good about following the policy book. Comes in incredibly handy, dealing with administrative law judge, puts all the pressure on you. You don't have the documentation, you don't have the write-ups, you don't have the policy, you don't have a signature on that policy, you're gonna lose. And we had it all, uh, Thursday, because they did a good job of maintaining it. But you can't just ignore those things, but should your attorney be handling it? No, too expensive. So, uh, whether that's gonna weigh off, offset the cost of handling a HR, probably not, but it's something. They could certainly handle it with a little bit of training, we tried to offer some training on that, but it's, but they just changed the way they handle the hearings, first of all, all the time, so you have to kind of be fluid. But anyway, that, that was one, that's one example, I mean, but there's other, some of you've been department heads, Jeff's been department head, he's utilized my office, I'm perfectly happy to do it. But, um, it's, there's other things I could spend my time on. My opinion, but that, that offset the cost, I have no, that's, that's your job.
Yeah, thank you, Kevin, I mean, uh, you know, and that's, that's one of the reasons why we asked Kevin to come, not necessarily to advocate one way or another, but to be able to bring some percept, perceptive to what, uh, what all is done through his office when it comes to HR. You know, trying to keep us as a county safe from further litigation and further problems because we're not handling it correctly. You know, I, I, I truly believe that all the department heads and all of our elected officials and so forth are, you know, do their best to manage it, but I do think it takes a lot of, a lot of time. I mean, I, I did some real quick numbers, I'm not, they'll hold me to, you know, the numbers being 100% as they are, but they're, they're gonna give a good effect of what it is. I mean, if, you know, we have roughly 23 departments in the county. You know, if each of them spend, if they're just working 35 hours a week, not even, not even counting the 40-hour, and coming up with an average that way, just going with the, with the minimum of 35, they spend 10% of their time, that's 3.5 hours a week. You know, 52 weeks in a year, that's 4,186 hours. A normal 40-hour work, worker, working 40 hours a week, 52 weeks a year, is 2,080. That's almost two people over the course of a year that have spent their time, employees have spent their time doing nothing but managing HR. It's not two people because we have to spread it out amongst a lot of people. You know, the same thing, if, you know, you would do that same thing, and you figure out, you know, the average wage was $28 an hour across all of our department heads and elected officials and so forth, you know, uh, that works out to about $117,000 a year, cost to the county. And these aren't, and, and, you know, these are people that are trying to do multiple roles that not their roles necessarily to handle, their role to make sure that the work of their department's getting done, making sure that, you know, one of their employees understands what a benefit package is, and it's being explained by each department a little bit different. I know I've worked for industry my whole life. I wouldn't want to have to go to four or five different people for the same answer, because I'm sure I wouldn't get the same answer from four or five people. So I think it kind of goes back to the handbook. I, I was commissioner, Mike T D was commissioner, Kevin was very instrumental, his office in getting us on the roll for getting our handbook redone, getting it brought up to date, getting much more information put into that. And I remember in the beginning, when it came out, there's a lot of buzz, wasn't gonna be good, it's gonna cause problems. I think you can pretty much go to every department in here, and they're gonna tell you that it's, it's been beneficial to them. I don't think you're gonna find anybody to say this is not a problem, and we wish it was burnt and gone, they're thankful for it now. And it's the same saying with this. Beginning, we'll have learning curves, if it's decided to go upon it, it'll be learning curves. But I think at the end of the day, you come back two years from now, most people will be thankful to have that place to go, not only employees, but the department heads, to know they have a resource to help solve them problems.
I went through all the full-time salary positions. Said we were doing a 5% increase, a 3% increase, roughly $90,000 to $100,000 just with full-time employees. So I don't know if that's an option as well. Okay, we'll save the, another point. And then, as far as the navigator position that was asked for, um, I don't know how you guys feel, but I found a grant through Yocum's office that would give $125,000 renewable for five years. Um, so that's an alternative as far as county dollars, too.
I got a question about the health department, Ken, you went and talked to them and we still put those wages in when we did that. You know, we, the commissioner signed on with the other, and you went, the last time we had our budget meeting, our last budget, you went that, that afternoon and talked to them. Come up with anything there, like?
Right now, the way they've got their approval for the state, for the, for their budget and all, they are using both budgets to fund their department.
Okay, and but, so, we're kind of, kind of jumped the gun on us there, and they, they kind of, we got cheated out. State's not gonna change there. I had that down. Well, we, I'll go through mine, everybody likes my popular, very contested. One, I guess it's only $1.1 million we're overspending right now, right, instead of two? 1.1.
1.1, yeah.
Last meeting it was two, so that's already better. I figured, you know, that's half of the surplus. So I got the navigator, thanks to Sheila and the grant deal, if we can do that, if that works. Uh, this, this is the one you sent out, I think?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll just go right down that list. Then the CDC, that's, we don't have the money, no, surveyor, no, the stipends? This is my opinion, I think it's a slap in the face if we don't give the stipend, because the state proved it. I mean, I don't know, you don't like stipends. That's just me, that's just me, then I'll go on. And the clerk, because of the money, was no, I mean, it's just And the clerk, because of the money was no, I mean, just because of the money and EMA was no, the probation was no, the place had old truck, no. Maintenance? Had a question mark for that, but then after listening to Mary, no. Uh, soil and water? That was a no because I still haven't figured out what they do. And HR, like the idea, but point one million dollars, no. Part-time wage increase? Bill, we give two point eights, okay. I had a dollar because I think them guys are so underpaid. Not giving benefits and that. I had a dollar down. I don't know how many hours they work. I don't have it. All we get, nothing. Two point eight if you make fifteen dollars an hour, what's that?
But the, the
Not a dollar.
On, on the part-time, this, this wage increase for part-time? That's not built in on, on any percentage of, of a cost of living increase. This is like the same thing we did with the employees last year. We, we made wage adjustments and that's what this is. This is to adjust their wages based on, you know, the state's uh, uh, classifications and what our employee job classifications are. So, you know, like a CDL is gonna make a difference than what somebody who doesn't, different positions. So this is not a two point eight percent increase. This is a wage adjustment to adjust their wages where part-time people get paid more.
Comparable.
Yeah, you'll base on some kind of classification and what they're able to bring, bring to the job when it comes.
Well, mine was just, mine was just a dollar, so that's my opinion, whatever. Then the community foundation, one point one million, no. So I had a lot of no's, but it's basically because of money. I think there's a lot of great ideas. Fifteen thousand for that was no, too.
Laura, when you do the budget and we have budgeted for grants?
Oh, yeah.
And it goes out of our budget, what can, what constitutes the revenue? Do we put the bunny from the grant into the revenue department too? Or do we just, are we just saying it's going out and not coming in?
Because D L G F doesn't actually really care about those grants, so we just budget what's in there. So let's take community crossings, for instance, that's the highway department in James, that's for one point five million. Because that's what they expect to get in the community crossings for now. So it's not a part of
County general.
You've got a twenty-seven million dollar budget overall. Your, your grants are, are paying for yourselves.
So there's never occurrence where we're saying there's a fifty thousand dollar grant coming out of the ten million dollar county general that we've allocated for and the fifty thousand's not going into the eight point nine million? It's, the grants don't come out of county general, ever?
No, but the, the, the navigator, the community navigator was putting in county general, I believe, because community foundation is currently paying for the opposition. And it has been asked, am I correct, it's been asked about county general or, or this year?
And then it's getting reimbursed by that administrator, you know?
From the community foundation, but, but in June, July of twenty twenty-five, that was asked to be out of county general paper because we're not sure whether the community foundation will continue on. They said that they were trying to. So it's one of those situations where your grant is basically going away, you still want the position.
Right, I'm just making sure we're allocating our grant out of county general, which sounds like we're not. Okay, and the revenue in return is coming from the grant money, but we're not doing that. They each have their own fund.
Okay.
Laura, can I ask a question just for my own understanding about what you just mentioned specifically with that community crossing? So that document you had distributed to council last month with the ten critical funds or so, that had showed like a million dollar deficit for highway. Is that in part because they budgeted community crossings, but we don't have that actual grant money yet or? Okay. That was just their general operating? Okay. Right. Thank you.
I, I guess, one question isn't, sorry Laura, I have to ask you. There, so just to make sure that everybody's clear, there's nothing, but, 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 when we're looking at our, at the budget and there's things, people in the budget that are paid out of grants. So, and all, and when we say we gotta, you know, uh, a, a you know, we're, we're, we've got a estimated revenue of, you know, eight million dollars, but we're spending, let's say twelve million dollars. None of that, part of that two million there is things that are being paid for out of grants or that are being reimbursed, reimbursed back to the county.
So your county general is your county general. That has nothing to do with grants. Okay, so there's no grant on the county count of county general, however, there are, there are other areas that money is being used to cover some positions that originally are covered by grants. There are few, but there are, there are.
I don't know if that helped answer questions for anybody any better or not.
Ken, one of the things that does happen though, and I don't know if it happens in other cases, public defender funds that get paid out to public defenders for felonies. Forty percent of that because Judge Ober's office, my office, filed with the, the state's guidelines, forty percent of that gets paid back into the general fund. And so we're spending sixty cents on the dollar. For those E D funds.
Right.
And so we have a one point one?
What you did say, one point one?
Is that including the E D A payments that we're supposed to get this year? That calculated in the revenue?
Are you telling me about the solar payments?
Uh huh.
That's not counted in either. That's the solar payments as estimated revenue at this point in time. Because I have no idea what estimated revenue we're going to give so.
According to W K V I, it's half a million dollars, but I don't know if you want to listen to them.
Okay, then we're not one point one, we're six.
If it's Because your county general is the one with one point one over your estimated revenue. So is this revenue coming from solar going to go to county general? Or is it going to go to the economic development fund? Or is it going to go somewhere else? You have to tell me.
That's your choice. In general, other counties that have had wind Solar projects around here, White County in particular, typically establish a separate fund and put the, the, some, I don't know if they do like just one general solar fund. I think White County does one for every, each individual wind project, solar project. And then the council, and I believe Stark County just did this, the council adopts either an ordinance or resolution is stipulating the permitted uses of that. So it could go into the mammoth solar fund and the council says, we are stipulating that this can only be used for wages or can only be used for building projects or it can be used for anything that county general can um, as they see fit.
Other points, we allocate the ARPA money for four hundred thousand dollars, salaries. Okay, so, but the salaries are coming out of county general. So there's a four hundred thousand dollar difference there that should come out of ARPA that should actually fix past four hundred thousand dollars worth of debt. We're not really that far, far, it's not as bad as one point one million.
I think we gotta be careful with that, right? That four hundred thousand, hey, I mean, that's gonna be twenty-six. That's a, how, right? Cause that ARPA money is here.
But we've allocated it through ARPA.
Yeah, just for one year though.
No, we did it for two.
Well, then after the two years, it's
Right, yeah.
Right, but that four hundred thousand will go into county general to pay the salaries. Well, it doesn't go in there, but it uses, use the money to pay the salaries. So it will offset the one point one million.
I think some of the points it's trying to be shown is, is that it's easy to say that's one point one million upside down, but there's a lot of other factors that fall into this, say reimbursement of money, you know, money that's not spent in twenty twenty-four that is rolled back over to twenty twenty-five, so it makes, that's where I think sometimes people, people don't understand where the, you know, where some of the difficulty comes in because these are unknowns. We don't know exactly what that rollover could be. Don't know, so we have to make, you know, best judgment calls as to where we continue to go. That's why it'll be very important, hopefully, by the council will continue on next year doing another fiscal plan and, you know, so we can continue to see where we're at, where we're trending.
Then the, you know, they did the, I mean, hell. You know, the county gets all that money where if it wouldn't have gave the tax payment. Library, the schools, towns, everybody would have got some of that money. We just, oh, I don't know. I think we ought to dish it out, not just take it all. We ought to help the community.
Oh, I
You know, they
And that was
Parks or something to, something to, you know, you gotta look at the things, they ought to at least get a baseball diamond or whatever, painting on the side of the building, or I don't know, whatever you want to like. But I mean, I don't think it ought to just be used for, uh, no, I don't think it should be used for payroll. I think it should be used to help the community. You know, liberal here, but
No, I, I agree with, agree with you in, in, in most principle. I, you know, most people know, have seen me on this board for eight years and know that I'm not quick to use, you know, uh, windfalls, we'll call them, to pay the cost of local government because they can go away at any time, so.
Yeah, we're using, what, that COVID money?
Right.
Now, we bought an ambulance, I just keep spending. Granted, you know, property taxes, what was it, twenty-six percent for farm ground that year, like Kendall told us?
I don't remember.
Pretty sure it was twenty-six percent farm ground. Had like a little, had a meeting, you know? White County, Dasker. Six percent, he had a guy from Farm Bureau there and a guy from Yeah, they had two guys there, a lady and always. So your taxes are gonna go up, but then, I don't know, even if we didn't pay any of this stuff, you're still half million in the pool and you have the carryover. I'd be good with that, but you gotta run the government. My opinion, there's however many, seven of them.
Well, I, I guess, um, I guess my question would be to the board, you know, um, and the, you know, these are just the highlights that, you know, actually, and I don't know if you had the latest one that I, uh, sent out, but had, I added assessor and the clerk because the assessor had the aerial mapping for fifty thousand and clerk for voting machines at the fifty-six thousand, voting machines.
Didn't get that one.
Okay, uh, yeah, I think I said it with the agenda or, or I said it out there Friday. But anyhow, uh, uh, I got this one to open, but then it said five more. I'm going to Willie this week. Because sometimes they, I could get them to open and other times can't. I opened this one, then I could open, and you sent another one, I opened the agenda. I don't know, we're, we're not So I guess, I guess, you know, and these are just the highlight points. These are not the only points that have to be, uh, discussed, like, you know, uh, if there, or any, or any cuts or any changes to the budget, what is our final? Decide, or you wait until that? That's what I had wrote down, that's what, clarify. Uh, the, uh, so I guess that's, I guess that's my question. You know, how does this board want to move forward? I mean, uh, you know, Mike brought up some suggestions. Do you want to make a motion on them to change them? Are there other things? I mean, you know, uh,
I don't think I want to make the motion now. I just put him down as a point.
Okay, yeah.
I'd like for all of us to agree or halfway agree. Let's well, what, but you know what I mean, halfway agree, I mean.
So do, I, I guess, so we don't just, do we want to, do we want to have another meeting? Do we want to go down, you know, on this list here one by one and?
I'm okay with Jeff's side about the truck and what was the other thing you said?
It was persistent to put that back to the
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with that.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
All right, we got a motion.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second to, uh, uh, put the EMA part-time request down to eight thousand? Or, no, for the truck was eight thousand, I'm sorry.
Six thousand for the truck.
Okay.
Eight thousand for the part-time.
Okay, six thousand for the truck, eight thousand for part-time employee. And I was actually just looking that up real quick, uh, yeah, last, last year on twenty twenty-four's budget, she's had seventy-five hundred for part-time. Just uh, and then, yeah, there was three thousand for the, for the truck last year. We had that discussion.
I'm, I'm going by what my farmer guys say. They're, they're the ones that know transmission.
Nope, I was just letting you know what the numbers were that were in her budget as of last year or so. All right, that's a motion. Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, passes. Are there any other ones that? You want to make a motion? Yes, we can.
Second it. Or stipend?
This year, yeah.
We're talking next year's budget.
Yeah.
We're talking next year's budget. We're not talking
But they made the stipend for this year. How do you want to handle it?
Well, we can, we can, we can add, we can address the stipends, you know, for, for twenty twenty-four at any meeting, any time. That, that'll just be, you know, a, you know, either transfer in the department or an additional to, to resolve that issue where looking at the twenty twenty-five budget, and that is, Laura's correct, the auditors is every year and the clerks is only on election.
So when you're making the motion for the twenty twenty-five budget, you want to add for the auditor the twenty-five hundred dollar stipend, correct?
Correct, for twenty twenty-five budget. All right, we have, we have a motion. Do we have a second? All right, we have a motion and a second to, uh, add the auditor and the clerk in for the election year, twenty-five hundred dollar stipend.
But we're only, okay, go ahead. You ready for discussion yet?
Um, just getting ready to say, is there any discussion?
Why are we even talking about the clerk? For twenty twenty-five, because we have to make another motion, another budget in twenty twenty-six, or twenty twenty-six.
The stipends for twenty, the clerk is supposed to get a stipend for twenty twenty, for the election year, he gave that to her. So I guess the motion is probably, or a motion for the auditor for the twenty-five hot, hundred dollar stipend for twenty twenty-five. And we don't have to make an additional or a transfer for Joe.
Yeah, you're, no, Mike's correct because next year there's no election year, so the, the clerk would not get, she only gets it on election year, so it would be, you know, she'd get it this year, then she won't get it next year, then following years.
We need to reword the motion?
No, the firm of the auditor will come in for your twenty twenty-four.
No, the firm and the auditor will come in for your twenty twenty four year and ask for their stipends. But right now you're talking about the twenty twenty five stipend.
Okay.
Twenty five budget and the stipend for the auditor.
Only. Yeah, clerk is not eligible, clerk is not in election. So, yeah, would you, would you like to reword your?
I'll make a motion for the twenty five hundred dollar stipend for the auditor for the twenty twenty five year.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second? All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any others that we want to address tonight?
I'll make a motion for no new employees.
All right, we have a motion. Yes. Mr. T D, does that include the navigator?
That's calling with a grant. Okay, I'll go downside. Navigator's fine because we're getting a grant.
She has to apply for the.
Well, then she'll have to apply. Well, we're one point one million dollars short. So up to you guys. I think if we get a grant, it's good if we.
I mean, that's the answer that you're, or that navigator.
Yes, I was, I'll see if I can, if we can answer them. I'm not going to guarantee you that we can.
So your question about the grant, when is, what is the grant first of all? What, who's writing the grant?
I'm the, the office. Rudy Yakimoff.
Okay, so who are you writing the grant for?
I didn't write it. I said he would help write it. And not, probably Rudy, probably. I, you'll have to reach out to the office.
That's what I'm asking you because you just told, you just informed the council that this position will be funded by a grant.
I didn't say it would be funded by a grant. I said there's an option to get a grant for it. I don't have all of the options to fund the navigator position through a grant through Rudy Yakimoff. I can, all the information I have on it. Look at it. File, file the grant.
Before the council votes on that, could I get that information so that we can have a discussion about it? That would be my question.
I mean, that's fine, but regardless, the council doesn't want to make any decisions whether or not they're going to grant or not a grant for one point one million dollars. I mean, right, Mike? Is that what you're saying? No new.
Well, if they can get a grant, I don't care about it.
We're giving you an alternative. Everyone else is getting nothing. I was not, I was not implying that it's that easy.
And I guess, I guess part of my answer right now is going to be, you know, depending upon how, you know, what, you know, how the clarification of, of, I guess the question for me is, is to clarify the answer for you is, is that all full-time position? If that's the answer, then, you know, if there's an alternative to funding the navigator, other than what her grant is today, if it goes away, then there's no funds for that position. That's one of the conversations we've had many times around here that if things are grant funded and the grants go away, the position could go away because we don't have the revenue to fund it. Right, no, no, it, you know, if the council votes to do new, new, no new, you know, employees this year, then, um, yeah, we'll figure, you know, then, then it becomes. Right, yeah, there's not, nobody's guaranteeing that that position would then continue after the grant cycle runs out that is here right now.
But yours doesn't run out June or July, right? So you could always, when you find out, you could always come in for, try to get an additional. I, well, that was a hard one, but it's like, we thought there was a grant. For one point one million dollars. Not like we don't like it. Like, we're just, you only have so much money.
Yeah. Right, no, really noted. So is your motion still, Mike? No?
I don't think I better make a motion.
Okay.
I've rescinded my motion and my motion now is.
I'll make a motion that we don't have any new employees, hires.
I'll second your motion.
All right, um, so we have, we have a motion for no new hires in the county unless you're rescinding your motion.
Yeah, I'm going to rescind my motion too.
Okay, now we have a motion that's been rescended. So your, your, your second is, uh, rescinded with it, I guess. It's moot point. So.
How about we make another meeting? Ask the rest of the staff.
If that's the board's wishes, then.
Brad, Tim, you guys want to do, are you guys good with that? Brad?
I think you guys, the last few years, I mean, this is still a very difficult thing. But I think the last few years, as you've started doing these extra budget meetings, I think you probably on the whole done a better budgeting job than in the past because you haven't tried to cram it all into. Where you got all this other stuff.
I'm, and I'm, I'm fine with that, uh, you know, uh, uh.
You also put in there, uh, the voting machines. You know, that was an additional money.
Yeah, it was fifty thousand for, or excuse me, fifty six thousand for the voting machines.
And you know, the ones we got now at work, but.
Yeah, the aerial mapping of fifty thousand.
And the mapping, that was, uh, I don't know if that come out of the general fund. But yeah, so we could have another meeting and try to figure that stuff out, but gonna have to make our mind up that day.
No, I, I mean, I mean, I guess that's my whole point to it is, is, you know, uh, I have no problem. I've seen it both ways. I'll give Nathan both ways because I've seen us have meeting after meeting after meeting. And then it comes down to October fourteenth and we're making all the decisions at the last moment. And if that's what we're planning on doing, then there's no sense in having another meeting. If we're going to come to another meeting with everybody prepared and with, you know, prepared to make cuts or make additions or make changes or make whatever needs to happen, then I'm all in favor of doing that. But if we're going to come and it's going to be another meeting like this where we're just kind of walking around in circles and, you know, nobody's prepared, then it's not going to work. Um, I can't do it until after the twenty seventh. Back the week after the twenty seventh.
What about September thirtieth?
Yeah, I, I, uh, I'll be back then. So, yeah.
Anytime during the day, Laura, you can. Or we could do the first.
Yeah, I, you know, and, and, and no offense to Teresa whatsoever, but I would like, I think it's beneficial to have Laura here. There'll be questions.
Can we do it earlier? On at seven?
Yeah, yeah, I, I know you'll both be here, but.
I'll be picking corn that day. Oh, wait, I'm just talking for Tim.
Five thirty. I don't know, five, five thirty.
I mean, I, what, I mean, what, whatever works around, I, I mean, you know, like I say, ag season's in, so whatever works around Tim and them, I'm, I'll make work. That work better when the dew's on and wet.
About eight thirty, nine?
I go to the gym then. I gotta go to the gym at nine o'clock. That's Tuesday. I'm busy on Tuesdays and Thursdays.
I'll bring my treadmill from, from home. You're more welcome to use.
Got to bring a pool.
That I don't have.
Okay, how about, Tim, does nine work? Nine? Okay, the first at nine.
I won't be here.
Well, you won't?
No, I'm going to the gym. I always go to the gym on Tuesday. No, I'll come, whatever. Don't do that, please.
But by the time.
Hey, Nathan, me and you's on good terms. Let's leave it that way.
Yeah. God, God bless you. Yeah. I mean, once again, I mean, I, I thank those that came with some suggestions and all and some ideas. I challenge everybody once again to, you know, let's come, let's, you know, let's be able to give Laura her final paperwork. So on October fourteenth, it's a quick meeting because we're just ratifying the budget.
How close does everybody want to be from that one point one?
Laura, do you know what our overage is from last year? Like what, how much scrolling over? A million?
Half and five hundred thousand? What are you guys thinking? Dead money? Think it's going to be hard to beat at the eight.
Yeah, I mean, uh, I mean, we could, we could set a target point or just.
See what happens? See where, see where it ends up?
Yeah.
That's probably about the easiest.
Yeah, I, I, that's. All right, uh, if there's no further discussion on budgets, please, further discussion? Thank you. Uh, we'll go to board reports. Anybody have anything that they want to report on? Anything that's happened? Anything of interest?
Property taxes going up twenty six percent farm ground.
You don't have enough time for me to get on that soapbox.
Okay, I tell you.
Everybody, everybody loves the price. As everything goes up, you're selling, but it really sucks when it catches up to you at the end of the day. Higher value things are, higher you pay.
Yeah, not the assessor's office.
Yes. Yes, yes, has absolutely nothing to do with the assessor's office or the, or the county level. It's. Right. Uh, all right, any public comment? Yes, Jay? I'll let you address it since you've been handling the projects.
I don't know. I, I can't speak to the questions specifically legally, but what I don't think I or the rest of the county have made clear and how it's like, the way the delivery method of construction was selected with ton and blank. That is their primary role is project management. There are three options when we, you could do what's called design build where the same company does both of them. There's a, a construction manager as something, and then there is construction manager as constructor, which is what we adopted. Um, and they are limited to self-performing no more than twenty percent of the total project cost because under this structure, their entire responsibility is to do that. Unfortunately, in some of these issues that we've had, it, like what Judge Walker said specifically about all of the different water coming down in one section, um, we have a very good architecture firm, but the particular architect who was mostly responsible for the Justice Center was having some sort of mental breakdown, midlife crisis, something. He actually left the firm mid-project. And there, there are a lot of issues that even that we had drawn on an ongoing basis that were attributable to a guy who had checked out. And this is a guy who had done design work on Bankers Life Stadium. And so he was very competent, but something went wrong and that was a lot of the issue. Um, we have two different and seemingly much more mentally well-adjusted architects representing the, the firm at this point now. Um, and the same as on the Justice Center, ton and blank is in that role where they are only allowed to self-perform up to twenty percent because their primary job is construction manager. So they have an engineer who is dedicated to the project. It's not like I'm trying to pretend to be the engineer. They have a dated, everyday onsite superintendent who then has a project manager who runs two projects most at one time with twenty hours of his week dedicated to us, twenty to that. And they have an engineer in the same position who is the engineer and whose job is to oversee to make sure those sorts of checks and balances are in place. So there might be a little bit of added benefit, but I don't know for the hourly cost of what somebody else from the outside versus me would be. It would add that much because of the specific structure that we have in place.
I understand that, but I'm just, I'm looking for greater insulation for the county and for these projects when you're doing them. It seems like there should be an added layer of protection because these costs.
No.
Continue this water. You're going to be looking at.
So far, we have not had to incur any costs. Ton and blank has been taking responsibility for those issues. Long term, I.
I might be able to answer your question, Jenny. Good, good question. Uh, the, I don't, I don't know that adding that layer helps us. Um, it certainly might help in managing the project. I think Nathan's done the best he possibly can. He was never trained as a project. Saved us a lot of money, but that's beside the point. The, your question is, could it, uh, help us if we end up with a bad product? Um, possibly. First of all, they could, we could get somebody to agree contractually to be responsible for those uh, before we go into a project. Um, but the problem right now, and we don't have that now, so we're probably not going to do a large project in the future, but we're in the middle of one now. Um, the, this is the first time I've heard about Judge Walker's, uh, leaks. I think you might have mentioned them in passing, but I, it's the first time I've heard that there's been that big of a problem. And this, as your legal advisor, it does concern me, the more time that goes on, uh, that you have it, because you're relying on, and this happens in every construction litigation case, why don't do them anymore? They're very difficult. You have to prove, uh, that the person you're working with is negligent. Uh, and they're the very one you're relying on to try to fix your problem. So you have to decide at what point do I go outside of, hire a third party either to identify the problems that the first party caused me, uh, or fix the problems the first party caused me and then litigate over who's going to pay for those costs. It, it's a very difficult area. Uh, but I think we should identify what those problems are immediately and notify our, uh, ton and blank, the, the architect, any potential party that could be responsible for that. Uh, I don't know what it is. I don't know the first thing about it, but, uh, identify what those problems are. And that might be require a little bit of money to hire somebody that is a third-party expert. Gives us some insight into what problems might there have been. Now, immediately, I could see is going to cause Nathan problems who works hand in hand with these people every day trying to get the project done. And I don't want to cause any animosity there, but it, it puts us in a. But it, it puts us in a very difficult situation where we do have to pay attention to, uh, our rights under the current contracts, contracts we had, because that project's getting, what, I don't know, how many years old? Two years old. You run the risk, you're bumping up against statutes of limitation or contractual, uh, you know, just latches in general as a, as a legal theory, that you have to bring your cause of action within a period of time, so. Valid point. I don't, I don't know that a layer of project management give us any better position than we're in, because we do have contracts. And there is a certain overall common law warranty of habitability. Whatever that's-
Say, that's good enough. That's good enough. Save us a little money here. So if you've got a third party, that third party, in my opinion, would hold that company accountable to a greater measure than someone in-house.
I wanna, I wanna make sure to clarify something I didn't work, Ton and Blank has their own engineer. He was not the one who was responsible for designing the project, though. The engineers contracted by Luminon, our architecture firm, are the ones who did that. He is more of in an oversight position. So he's the engineer who oversees our, our superintendent and our project manager is not the part of the engineering team where any potential design flaws exist. That may be the case, yes. Um, but like I said, the, the disconnect is most likely probably fully on the design team's side between the architects and the engineers as opposed to between them all on one side and the construction. Ton and Blank has been the, I mean, pardon language, they have been absolute assholes when needed, dealing with the design and engineering team to keep them straight. No, it is a legitimate, and it's- And it's a very messy thing, but yes. Yes. Well.
But, and I, and, and here's my last comment, because I know everybody wants to know. This is just an observation tonight of the meeting that was just held. We're hearing over and over 1.1 million we still have to make up, but at the last meeting, my observation, they had a housing project for, I don't know, wasn't supposed to cost the county anything for a previous meeting. And now, Emily did everything but say, this is a bad deal, guys, this is a bad deal. Two percent interest on three hundred and twenty-five or fifty thousand dollars. And that vote went like that. And here we are, two weeks later, we're saying we're 1.1 million, we don't have any money to hire employees, but we passed a housing project in a wink of an eye. Split right down the table. Right down the table. And to me, as an observation, I'm just curious about that, how fast that happened. Again, the advice was, this is kinda risky, but we threw the money away. Well, here at the end of the loan, I mean, you're hoping you're gonna get paid back, because you're at the very tail end of that loan being paid back. And I, I don't even recall who voted what way. I just recall that the vote was paid very quickly and and here we are, two weeks later, we are complaining that we still don't have money.
We didn't. We didn't.
I understand.
I didn't, I mean, I thought it was a foot too.
Yeah. Well, then it's bad.
Jenny, Jenny, I got one question. I'm a little confused. At what point, what conversation left you with an impression that, under the impression, the county would not have any money in this? Because as far as back as January and February, they agreed to provide a low-interest loan. The other housing project that we have discussed potentially happening on the, um, county farm ground, that one is not anticipated to cost the county anything out of its operation budget. This one, we have always intended that some sort of loan would be made.
I would have to look back.
Sure.
But it was just made quickly and that.
I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn our-
No, wait a minute, we're in the middle. Really?
We've been-
Could you ask the question loudly enough that they know what I'm answering?
Well, it, if you're gonna have, if you're gonna have public comment, I would ask, though, that you have it with org and, so we can hear, because I've, I, I know, uh, what was that, but I, I didn't hear what it was.
We can't hear you either sometimes. Not you, but, not you. You always turn it on.
What was your question?
Yeah, well, I'll follow up with Nathan on the question I just asked him, but I do have a question for the council. Has anyone looked into what the HR firm would charge the county to, to handle the, the hundred and fifty employees as opposed to having an in-house employee?
I'm gonna refer that to, to my friend Brad.
I have looked into it, man. It doesn't justify a hundred and fifty people that we have employed.
The cost is higher than hiring someone?
Yes, I did talk to Jennifer in the auditor's office, and she informed me that she's been working with Fred Rogers, and I think they would like to continue with the way things are being handled right now. I really think that that's probably-
I wish he would know.
But if we continue with that, we don't have to have any more money to fund a position for someone. My story went around the county. Do you wanna invite me a little bit on that? No, I don't feel little, some of the counties.
Okay.
But, and I don't wanna speak on behalf of Fred or Chris, but their job's not to do HR. Their job is to run the sheriff's department. So even though he helps Jenny, ideally, that's not probably the best use of us paying him.
So it sounds like to me the answer to your question is, no, we do not have a number. We don't have a, a cost, what, what that would cost.
We do outsource IT.
Yeah, I think the, another valid point to be made is we do outsource IT, it's quite expensive. As well as we'd like. I know some people say, well, we tried doing it in-house too. Yeah, we tried doing it in-house with, you know, a, a very, with a couple of very good people, but we were paying them very little, and we weren't getting what you needed for, to manage IT of this size for what we were trying to pay people. So gotta go to it, um, to do that.
And I've had interest from other counties. From this, another county, I should say, that would like to team up with your county and maybe potentially do some projects together, and this might be one. But it's not until potentially next year, you know, when it could happen.
Good information to know? Yes, ma'am.
I'm gonna make a simple observation, and I admit that I don't intend any of these meetings, but I fully intend to attend more in the future. An observation remaining in the seat tonight, some of these have a lot of experience with strategic being in budgeting. It seems like there were way more unknowns and lacking of clarification for thoughtful decisions to be made around the budget. So I appreciate that there's room to be in the meeting, and I hope that everybody takes the time to do their homework to fully understand what the asks are for and what the muddies are coming from and what the actual numbers are that we're looking at. Because sitting out here, it is very ready. And I would just like a little more attention and thought to be given to how our county muddies are spent and the revenues that we can potentially generate to bring them in, bring them in, to offset what those are so that we all can admit and make the best use of our funds.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
With regard to the employees, we talked about HR and what the benefits are, I just set out way across. I hope that we look at, or do all look at each of the employee positions in that way, not just say, I'm doing this or we are. Um, and specifically, obviously, I'm here to advocate for that navigable. We have to look at things like resisters. I'm getting Jeff to ask a question about what is this doing for the county? She saw four hundred to some people, eleven of those people came in. That's huge in terms of the number of, of the amount of money that is being saved in jail when looking at thirty-five to forty dollars a day for DMS numbers, seeing how much individuals. So that's something that I would ask them to do, is please balance those numbers out, look at the benefit in terms of what we're spending compared to what we're receiving for that, that cost.
No, we're, we're, we're here to do the, I don't wanna stop, we're here to do the county's business, so what time it takes, it takes.
It is, is the navigator position. Until two years ago in this county, I had complaints with her, you know, I thought only had people come through the door and asking for services, and the first call I make is a key sermon. And she navigates those people to services. I had a place also to turn to, you know, I got to inquire eighty to a hundred places in the back. She's there every day. And if anybody wants to come to the jail, I've invited everybody before, she's there all the time. And she helps people out in the community. I'm pretty jut about this. I thought the ways I could make fun of her, I, I just wish you guys would consider that position after July first. I already have three of the office halls, I didn't realize that grant was available. Because I don't know where I would turn it, if she wasn't there, she helps my office every single day. You know, but that's the first one I make when I have somebody need the services, I'll call Katie and she'll, I call her at ten o'clock, she's come to the hospital and help, would try to help somebody with finding a bed. And she's done that before. I just don't think anybody realizes, the asset she is is, I didn't have that before. Tell them she got that grant, she brought on board, I had a place to turn, but now I didn't. So I just wish you would consider that. Anybody has any questions, come in, she brings that paper talk all the time. Tells me what she does, if there's a hassle, place to turn. She navigates them to the services, so I just. So we would consider that position.
All right, any further discussion? All right, we will adjourn our meeting for nine, nine, twenty twenty-four. Please sign your paperwork before you head out. Our next, uh, the next commissioners' meeting is eight sixteen, twenty twenty-four, and eight thirty AM. Next council meeting is Monday, ten fourteen, at seven PM, and the next joint session is ten fourteen, at six PM.